Good evening everyone, welcome to the monthly meeting of the Lebanon Town Council for the month of June. At this time we have Shaw and Street. We can all rise for our invitation followed by a pledge of allegiance.
It's power of our word, Mary. Heavenly Father, we thank you again, Lord, for the opportunity to be out tonight, conduct the town's business. We thank you for the town council administrations and their desire to serve. It just says that you give them the wisdom to lead the town according to your will. We just thank you for a good Cedar Fest that we just wrapped up and just forgive us for where we fell in, in Christ's name, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pledge allegiance. Again, we welcome you to sit into our regular monthly meeting. I'm getting ready to get into the agenda here at this time. So, do we have any business from council members that needs to be added to the agenda? Hearing none, go have a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I want my good motion, Mayor.
Your second.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Okay, we have received minutes in our agenda from the May regular council meeting and then the reconvene meeting on May 22nd. Can one have a chance to review the minutes, most two meetings in May?
I'll make a move, I'll motion we approve at 5:00 H. He's 5:00 to change.
Motion to approve the May meeting, uh, May meetings minutes. Your second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Mr. Short, we've received the council's payable, are there any additions?
Yes, sir. Just stations, there's, uh, section B, just one item on there for $119, waste water in my house.
Okay. Mr. Gillen? Chair of Finance Committee, any comments or motions?
Mayor, I move to approve the May council payable for the additions presented.
If we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion, the council's payable?
Mayor, this does also, and this one does close out the street lighting project. It's also on here, that payment.
Final one.
Final one.
Thank you.
This also counts for mayor in the State Street budget that we went over last month.
Okay, alright, thank you. So, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Okay, we're now down to, uh, earlier public requests. We have with us first, Mr. John Michael McCoy, chief of our fire department. John Michael, good seat.
Good seat, camp, how y'all doing tonight?
Good.
I'm good, y'all. Good deal. Uh, Drew, print some of these, I'm gonna pass these on both sides so y'all kind of have an idea of what we're looking at. I'm not gonna get that down there until I take a look. Most of y'all, I'm sure, went over your council packet, which I put in there. We'd like to apply for a live fire building in West County. We'd like to locate that here in Lebanon. The IDA has donated us two acres, possibly.
Possibly.
Possibly. In discussions with possibly getting that two acres donated on Fly Clay Drive down below, Jay Inn Boulevard. I've been up to look at it, had several other members and captains, my department go up and look at it, think it's a great place. We have access to water. Drew and I kind of touched on the hydrant situation up there. I don't think it's gonna be a huge issue to get, to run another hydrant back down to that side of the property. Mr. Breeding, I think with 3D owns that property, is that correct? As far as I know, I'd say he'd allow us to dig a line across there to, to give us an estimate to put another hydrant up there to that building. That's the only drawback I see of that property, but I don't, I know I talked to Scott much, I talked to Mayor, but I don't see the other property that would actually fit that here inside of town.
Is there one, you killed me lying there, Brandon?
Even if we can't get any rest, we should have these properties.
We should.
Yeah, I think we do.
So, that solves that issue. And when I say a live fire training building, this isn't something we're gonna go out every week and put it on fire. This is more flowing water inside instead of having to get an acquired structure. That helps that warranty claim, because we flow a ton of water in the parking lot training guys. There's a huge difference when you get inside of a house, 1400 square feet, you know, DM I can run's a lot different, flowing going around than it's open space parking lot. This training facility's gonna be great for the county, for Lebanon in particular, because our guys love to train. It's gonna be excellent. Now, I've looked into it, we're, we can put in up to 480,000 for the grant. That doesn't mean we're guaranteed all that money. So, how the process, we need to go, we need to go get probably three bids out there from, for some contractors who have probably built this thing in the past, or anybody that's wanting to possibly build one. There's some, there's some architectural drawings that's already drawn up.
That was in the packet.
That was in the packet, correct. So, you have four options. You have Class A burning fuels here at Class B. Class A's gonna be wood, wood like materials, pallets, hay, straw, what you wanna burn in there. Class B's gonna be a propane or natural gas. We'd like to go with Class A. It gets a little bit warmer, it's a little bit more realistic than anything else in there. So, we have the option to go, as you saw in pictures, we can go to a metal building, a steel repad building, or we can go to a concrete building. Those are the two options to go. Four, and that's, that's all that we have for the grant. I'm thinking, and I want to have one other conversation with Gay Cities Chief down in Scott County. They went with the metal building, but I have not spoken to him personally. I'd like to figure out why they chose the metal building versus the concrete building. It may be a cost aspect, I'm not 100% for sure, but longevity, I would assume concrete center block buildings will be a lot better for us. Lifetime of it could be anywhere from 10 to 30 years. That's, that's, that's one of those things. Now, they do allow inside the grant, instead of the town owning the property as a locality, that they can do a long-term lease. So, that's up to you all, whichever, whichever one you all want to do on it. Alright, so that's whatever's more better.
And other government agencies are allowed on it too, is that correct?
Correct, yes, correct, yeah.
So, how do you apply them, our, our, our?
I do, yeah. So, even though it's gonna be a county used building, we have to have one locality to apply for the grant and be responsible for the grant. My opinion, Lebanon's the center of the county, we might as well do it. We've got the building to do it, you know? And I think we've got a good council to put our heads together. You all have done a bunch of grants, a bunch of bidding in the past, you all kind of got us along there, so. Now, when I go back to the money of 480,000, once we get our bids back, we apply for the grant, I'm gonna shoot for a January 1st date to apply for that grant, it's longer than they give us, like, January 1st. That gives us enough time to get our bids in, look at, look at all specs, we're good to go on it. So, let's say a bid, a bid comes in, 320,000, we wanna go forth with. Now, they may not guarantee they'll give you 320,000. They may give you 300,000, they may give you 280,000, or they could give you 320,000. From what I've spoken to the division chief in Marion, he said nobody else has got any grants out there for that building. So, as of right now, we'd be 100% funded on it. And even though we apply for it, we don't have to accept it. So, if, let's say we, we get a bid in, grant 50,000, and they only give us 350,000, they can't come up to 100,000, which we'll shoot again next year. I have no problems with that. I, I want this thing to be 100% funded by Virginia Department of Fire Program, because the money's out there.
So, do you get your name on the list now? How do you, how do you get into this? I know you can't, you've got the January 1st.
We've got the January 1st. So, the first decision has to be made, do you all want to lease? Do you all want to have another government still own the property? Or does the town of Lebanon want to own the property? We have to, have to decide that first. That's, that's a council decision, it's not my decision on that. We have no problems with whichever route you all go through. I think that's a discussion you all had with, with the IDA.
Yeah.
On that. But, we'd like to say we have till January 1st, so what I would like to do is probably, maybe in August or September, go ahead and put these bids out, give these people 30, 60, 90 days to come back with prices. We can go ahead and have everything in the grant side filled out. That way, we're just waiting on the prices, come back, send that grant in, and we're good. It's a pretty simple grant process, it's five pages.
You're general emotional. Yep, that's all.
You set up the Class A fuel joints, or we'd be supplying our own wood pallets?
We would. Um, we, we did pretty, pretty good right now with getting donations of pallets, just from local businesses that don't need them or are broken. You can burn pallets, hay, straw inside of there. It's not, you all probably think you stack 10 pallets in there and can burn it. No, this building's only allowed to get up to 800 degrees. And it's, if it gets over 100 degrees, it's sent a signal directly to Richmond, Virginia Department of Fire Program. They call instructor, which will be Chris Dyke, who's our instructor right now on books. He has his book too, because they gotta take 100 degrees. There's a lot of safety aspects inside of there. So, we would burn one to two pallets max. And I would say per year, we'd probably burn three times a year. And those will be on Saturdays and Sundays, because all of our firemen are volunteer.
Do you care, John Michael, explain exactly what the purpose of that build is gonna be?
So, the, the main purpose is, is to allow new members, younger members, to go inside a building that's actually on fire, feel heat, feel smoke, see what it's like to search through, through those buildings and, and everything, because it's, you know, you get somebody that may be on their two years and hadn't had a major fire that we needed to go in and search at, well, that's a lot different aspect than searching this room, going from no heat, no smoke, going inside one of those buildings, especially in a stress environment. That's what we try to do, we try to put stress on during those, those burns. But, I really did, I think it's, right now, we're traveling 45 minutes to Wise, so that's an hour and a half travel to and from, just to get down there to do a burn. Yeah. So, that's, you know, you can think about two more hours we could spend in town on Monday night, doing training.
Doing training.
Doing training, correct, yeah.
Okay. We're still very interested in 100% funding.
I'd love to see it. From, from what I've heard from the division chief, that's, that's probably what we're gonna get. But, there's no guarantees, but that's more likely what we'll get. Wise, when they did theirs, I think they built theirs 2014, they were 100% funded. Dicklesville did theirs two years ago, they were 100% funded. So, so the money's out there to get, but you never know.
That's right.
January 1st, and maybe 20 other departments go in and say, hey, we want a burn building in our area, and they go down there.
John, will there be, will there be an additional bid for the engineering and architects?
So, from what I'm reading on that, Scott, yes, but I'm not, you know, on these grants and stuff, I'm not 100%. You all know more than I do on it. From what I'm reading, they'll allow $30,000 for the engineering and architect. And there's six steps that they want those engineers and architects to do for that. So, that may be, you know, something you wanna take a look at. I know the lane group, you all have a little bit of knowledge, you all worked with them a little bit. They've done, I think, two or three in Virginia for big engineering architect on that. So, if you all have contacted Drew, maybe we'll bridge out.
We've been in agreement with him, don't we, Drew?
We do. So, that's, that should be a surprise. The 30,000, I think, is, you know, that, that's been a standard throughout that program for several years, so I don't think we'll go over those aspects.
Okay.
Any other questions or?
Well, um, will be agencies outside of the county come in to train at our facility?
I think that's a good, yeah. So, so if you all remember the apartment fire out here in, I think it was Gilmore Street or something, so we called for admins, ladder truck, of course, we're on the ladder truck in the county. You know, that inner agency even outside the county, getting them down here to train with us, you know, going from there. It, it's gonna be in Washington County, you know, or Scott County, even Dixon County and McCann County, or wherever else to come over and train with us. And anybody that wants to do it, you know, we'll have our instructor, which is Fireman Dyke, he's a certified instructor, and he'll just have to be on site, and he has no problem being on site, because that's, that's house here in Lebanon.
You gonna be in town Thursday?
Uh, should be, yes.
By the evenings, 5:30.
5:30, where's that?
At, at the Gilbert Center.
Alright, I like that, yeah.
Okay, 'cause that's, uh, that'll be a discussion as far as normally what we'll have, and I think there, what we're talking about is, like, we did the Benjamins Park down there and the Farmer's Market.
Yes, sir.
Where that property's located, they can lease it to a town, or they basically give it to the town for a dollar.
Right.
And then we work with you all from there.
Got you. Perfect. And, and that, that paperwork, if you all agree on that later, I know you all have locked it on seat at best, but that paperwork states how, how, how they want the lease program goes, which is basically just, just like you said. So, I don't think we'll have any issues with that.
You know, if we go down the road on the grant, Drew, maybe you, even Shane, on that grant process, might be a good, between you two, work with John Michael, because I'm gonna be, we, procedurally, they'll know quickly how to get to what, where they need to get to.
Only question I have really, John, is have you had a chance to talk to any of the other ones that have the burn building about insurance?
So, that, that's another thing, glad you pulled that up. So, anytime anybody is, is doing a live burn on that facility, Virginia Department of Fire Program, insurance covers that 48, up to 48 hours after that live burn. Now, if you're not gonna be doing a live burn, it's just training, the departments who are the departments there will have the insurance, just like we were training, our insurance would be, if an acre came in and they wanted to train, of course, we keep insurance on file with Drew, their insurance would cover that.
Okay.
Correct.
Good question, Drew, thank you.
I want you to touch base too, that when the building's not in use, every door, every access is locked.
Correct.
Locked, okay.
And there's no other supporting agency could use the building without a certified Virginia Department of Fire Program instructor.
Right. And they require, if you do a live burn, they require 30 days of what's called pre-plant, which is basically they actually have what you're gonna burn, the time that you're gonna burn, how hot you wanna get it, how many, how many students you have there. But, it's down to the, to the.
Do they train you all to do this?
Correct, yes.
So, you've been certified to do that?
I'm a certified instructor.
Will we get one?
We've actually got two.
Oh, okay.
We've got Chris Dyke, who just got certified, and had a picture of the, the Canadian who just got.
So, we got two on there?
We've got two going on our part, which looks really, really good for, for the grants.
Oh, yeah.
We work a lot with St. Paul Fire Department, they've got six instructors down there. So, we have access to any instructor, but.
Very good.
Yes, sir.
John Michael, thanks for coming. There was council, any other questions for John at this time?
John, before you were here, you discussed, you touched a little bit on NFPA guidelines regarding PPE and stuff.
Yeah, correct. Uh, what I'd like to see the council do, so NFPA's National Fire Protection Agency, that's, that's who governs us. The locality actually has more governance than the National Fire Protection Agency for that, for national standards. We try to abide by the national standard as, as much as we can. The NFPA's 1971, which is the standard on protective ensembles for structure and proximity firefighting, which is basically our fire gear that states what you have to have on for interior fire, for exterior fires, and so, so, so on and so forth. There's, there's a department inside the county that doesn't abide by it. What I've been doing in the past is giving them as a mutual aid department, because I don't want them on scene with us, not wearing their own gear, but I abide by NFPA 1971. So, the council would need to make a motion that any mutual aid that comes inside of our town limits would have to abide by NFPA 1971. What that does, that gives me the ability to move them from that scene. Alright, so if you have.
To protect us?
Correct, it does. So, right now, I would have to contact Eric and have Eric remove them. Legal standpoint on that, I don't know how it's gonna, you know what I mean? If, if it comes down to this, we'll protect us more than anything else, because they have to abide by that, because it's inside the town limits. The town, it's, it's inside the town ordinance as far as fire protection.
Could you care to send that to Mr. Taylor?
Yeah.
Because he'll adopt, he'll, right after we got there.
Correct, yeah.
Have you addressed that with their chief, John?
Yes, I would rather not say these conversations, like, but. Y'all, y'all, everybody in council, I'm not for safety 100% for fire and incident, so that's, he's not.
So, it was addressed, and there's still no solution?
Correct, yes.
No problem.
Yes, sir.
Got you.
And I'm hoping the county will follow the town after that. But, that, that's the biggest goal, I mean.
And they're within the county, funded by the county?
Correct, yeah, correct.
Correct.
Yeah.
Good, John. You can get up to two.
I will, I'll, I'll drop the call. I'll tell you one. Uh, one other thing I had, did you all have a chance to look on that hose spec on those quotes? That hose replacement, was that in there, Drew?
That's in my bag.
I think Scott looked some things.
John, any questions on that at all?
Door is in there too.
The door is also. I'd like to have, while here, because I'm beyond my schedule, and you're all scheduled to answer any questions on any one of those, of course. My plan is to purchase that July 1st if we could, on that. The hose and nozzle, of course, have the replacement. The, the forceful entry door is another train tool for us. That would be housed inside of our apartment, for us on that also.
How many, I forgot, how many quotes did you get on the door? Remember?
Three. So, three on the door, and three also on the, um, on the hose and nozzle replacement quotes. The doors came in at Tradesman Fire Fabrication was 11,265. Firehouse Innovations was 10,955. The Public Safety Group is 11,750. I've done quite a bit of research on that. The Tradesman Fire Fabrication has a few more stuff in there that I feel like we would need, even for the future, to give us a little bit more training on that versus, versus the rest of the doors. And that gives you a breakdown on all three of those quotes. You still looking for that?
I am. Three, I can tell them they're working, they're losing their package.
So, the forceful entry, um, you all probably think about it as going in, and we had Hertz Grimaldi a week and busting down a door going from there. That, there's a little bit more in detail, practice, we kind of speak to it. Department of Fire going back to Gilmore Street, we sent a crew up to do forceful entry on that apartment. We had some issues there, was a little bit late, we brought her out the window. Not usually, you know, she's, she's in great shape, you know, nothing health wise, but forceful entry is something that you need to practice at least once a month. I go back to, it's comparable to baseball, basketball, when y'all were in high school, everybody played a sport, you practiced every single day. We got to high school two, three years, you had practice, Scott, and you missed in shots. So, I, and that, that, that's the biggest, biggest thing with that. It is a lot of money, but what we'd like to do is, from our donation fund, we've got about 8,000, 7,000 in that, we'd like to draw that down to 3,000 and use that for a portion of the forceful entry door.
And that's which group, which bid?
I would like to go with the Tradesman, that was a statement there.
Yes, Tradesman Fire or Fabrication?
Correct, yes, sir. They're, they're out of South Carolina, they, they include the delivery and setup. The Public Safety, they didn't include freight on it until, until it's time to ship, which I'm assuming will be probably five, $600,000, they, they won't pop up there, they would play it again.
John, would it be satisfactory to you if we go ahead and move forward with, I see that's not the lowest bid, but what if we approved 10,955 dollars out of the budget for the new, uh, forcible entry door?
Yes, sir.
And you make up the rest with your donations? Would that be fair?
Yes, sir, that, that'd be great, that's, that's better than expected, yes.
How much, 10,000?
10,000 for the door, and then you.
And that's out of your, that's on your 23, 24 budget?
Correct.
I'll put that in the form of a motion there.
Second.
Got a motion in second. So, Diane, let me make sure, we're on, out of the budget, you were saying 10,000 for the fire department. And then your donations?
I have three, since he's been gone.
I think it's like 265, 200, 300.
300. The team's already drawing up the donations, we can definitely do that, correct?
Any other questions?
No, the only difference, there's 310 dollars, so I don't think it's gonna be any back, really, because you all.
No, that shouldn't be, because we saved, we, we've done very well on our budget, and you know, the community's helped us a ton here with them last year, so we've saved some money, we definitely afford that.
Do we have a motion in second? Any further discussion regarding the forcible door hit simulator? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Now, there was something else, wasn't there?
So, you'll see also hose and nozzle replacement quotes, which is, which is a big chunk also in, in our budget, but it's, it's a half to half. After Engineer Campbell and I did some hose testing, of course, anytime you do that, you're gonna have some, that's just, just part of it. So, the only thing that we wouldn't be replacing, that we're looking to do a little bit different, is going from a two and a half inch hose down to two and a quarter. Water weight difference on that's about 40 pounds difference per 50 foot, which is gonna give the ability our firemen to move a little bit quicker inside of the structure. We usually use inch and three, three quarters of what we use on our interior fire pack, but the fires nowadays, if we can get more water, or PPMs, or those big TUs, we're gonna be a little bit more successful, especially in the type of, to be in safe operation on that, so.
All these quotes, John?
Yes, sir.
I just wanna make, you know, we talked about this, I guess, are we bidding apples to apples?
We are. The only thing that's not apples to apples, and it, and it's kind of tough, because El Park Brass only likes to keep one rep in our area, so another rep out of West County is not gonna be able to load it. It would be against. The Atlantic quote, they don't sell what we call keyhose, so we went out and got, got the current manufacturer we use now, which is Mercedes textiles, the, or the Whitmer. The Darley quote and the Atlantic quote, both of those are apples to apples comparisons. Which exactly it is.
We, we.
So, no other suppliers do the keyhose?
They are doing the keyhose, which you'll see in there, which is the Darley.
There's a third one, there's not a third one that does?
Uh, we could probably get one of y'all in to see that. I, I shouldn't have an issue getting that pretty quick. And then we can go a bit more from there.
We currently use Mercedes, is that what you said?
We currently use Mercedes, which you'll see for Whitmer, which you all recognize that name. That's a fire store. That's kind of what we use now. The friction loss on keyhose, which is the Atlantic quote and the Darley quote, is about 10 pounds less per 100. And then you think about 250 foot.
This will also, will also relieve the strain of our trucks.
Correct, yes, correct.
Our trucks aren't sitting there at high idle, they're.
So, a difference of 3,000 RPMs versus 2,400 RPMs for an hour and a half to 2,000.
So, if, with your, your all's experience, John, of these three quo, quotes, which one would you recommend?
I would recommend Atlantic, because of the warranty that we've, that they've done for us in the past. Anytime that we've ever had an issue going with Atlantic, it's, it's a phone call away from Mr. Doyer or Mr. Bobby Sinclair. And a lot of times, instead of us waiting two or three weeks on a set of hoses, they'll, they'll send it down here, and then he'll take care of the warranty on, on the battery.
And you can get another, you think you can get another quote for all of that?
Yeah, I can get that, yes, sir.
That has those things, all those things you need.
Yes, sir, yeah. So, the, if, if you'll notice, I'll, what I'll do is I'll take out, I'll leave that Yes, sir, yeah, so the, if, if you'll notice, I'll, what I'll do is I'll take out, I'll leave that Whitver quote in there, but I'll send through a copy of somebody else that can do keyhose, uh, for that quote. Atlantic, I think, is a little bit cheaper on the keyhose anyway.
Is this the same as the, uh, the door, John, this will be next year, come out next year?
Yes, this is July 1st, correct.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to go in and approve ten thousand one hundred and eighty dollars and eighty-seven cents for hose and nozzle replacements.
Okay.
And I would ask John Michael to get that third quote.
And the long term.
For the keyhose.
Correct.
Let's see if that, got you.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
O, same side, John Michael, you and the department, we thank you.
We thank the council.
Everybody, what you do for us, uh, you know, it seems like you've been pretty busy the last month.
We have, we have.
What's going on, and we appreciate your folks and the work that they do for us.
We thank the council, if y'all have any more questions, I'm going to head up the train there quickly. Thank you all, and I'll be with you probably next week, if I'll be, if you're ready, I'll get with you on another quote another next week. Thank you all.
Thanks, John.
Take care.
If you remember, in our last meeting, I think I briefly mentioned trails out of the government center, which we call the Hillside Trail Project, and we've met twice. So, we're glad to have representatives here this evening, uh, with, uh, Southwest District.
Soil and water.
Soil and water. So who's going to speak to council, you are?
Yes, sir.
The boss is coming to the podium. There's a picture, there should be a, a, a print of the Hillside Trail Project there at your seat.
Kind of looks like this, oh, yes, you all probably have it in your packet, but I also put in a desk called bigger map case. Uh, so I wanted to introduce myself, I have a little bit of a home western name, uh, it's Siobhan of Neshita, and I'm the district manager for Clinch Valley Soil and Water Conservation District. I'm sure you all know Mr. Gilmer, Kelly Gilmer's on my board, and my two staff members are also here tonight, Jeff Funder and Grant Levens, they're my conservation plan or, or conservation specialist, they plan a lot of our projects. I did also include beside your name tags there, the, our, our annual report from last fiscal year, so I know that all of you are out there listening, but this just gives you a little bit of idea of kind of what we normally do, so, um, we pretty much do four hundred to six hundred thousand dollars worth of farm projects each year, that's kind of on average, I would say. Basically, uh, fencing cattle out of streams to help improve water quality, um, for Russell County, which is our service area. But, uh, we do have the opportunity to do some special projects, um, every once in a while, and, um, this, this project, as it is right beside our new office, we relocated down to government center, we're very active there. And we've been just, um, seeing that it is really just covered up with invasive tree species and shrub species, so that's sort of what first caught our eye about it, and we started kind of looking at it and see uh, if there's anything that we could do just out of our own, um, district funds, and, um, just to improve the habitat out there for wildlife. But then, as our team met and got, uh, Mayor involved, and met with Mr. Farmer, and, uh, let's see, who else was there?
Ernie.
Ernie McFadden was there with the IDA center, because they, they have a flooding issue at the back of their building, I don't think you all are aware of that, but anytime we get a real downpour, it'll back up sometimes all the way to the farmer's market, um, so, he's interested in trying to see what's happening out there. And it's, it's a little bit of a complicated situation, um, so what we're trying to do from the Soil and Water Conservation District, uh, position, is sort of manage all these different issues that are happening on this property that I believe the town owns now, is that correct?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so, um, so just here tonight to answer any questions, educate you a little bit about what's happening on a piece of property that you all own, and we're hoping that we can, um, improve it not only for the citizens of the community, uh, we've heard that there's a real need for bicycle trails, uh, that Mr. Farmer spends a lot of his time chasing kids off from all the other parks where they're not supposed to be riding bikes, so let's identify a place to ride bikes, that would be great for kids. Also walking trails, there's a lot of grants that we would be able to apply for if the, um, you know, the top line being promote public health, recreation, then conservation, education, and uh, there's a lot of research where economic development follows, you know, uh, prominent park systems, trails in towns, so. So it's, it's kind of a win-win situation, and really the stormwater, uh, issue that's happened there, it, it actually probably really needs to be addressed, not just.
I was going to ask you, could you advise council about the issue with culverts?
Okay, so, um, if you look at that map that I, the, the big one that I printed out for you, you can see that there's a little blue line, which isn't a creek, it's a culvert. It is what drains everything from the CGI property, which is the one on the right, and the, or, and the north, all, all parking lots, all building, hard surfaces, everything drains right to that point, as far as I can tell. We met with Lane groups last week, I believe, they just did an initial, uh, visit with us, I, I think by request of Andrew, um, called them up there, so we walked around, and I think they were going to follow up with you guys and try to get the actual engineer on, but from what my staff and I, when we were walking around, that's what we see. The water is initially, I think, was meant to come out of that culvert, go down the hill, and as we all know, water likes to take a right-hand turn, right? No, it doesn't, it's going straight down, and it's missing what is in that red circle or red rectangular area, that's supposed to be, or that is a water retention pond, but the water is not hitting that, it's going straight down, and I don't know if it's dropping into a sinkhole, I don't know where exactly it's going, but it, where, I feel like it's ended up is in the parking lot behind, it doesn't.
And in front of the, uh, are they past the farmer's market down in front of the Whitver's park?
That's right.
Right, for that culvert there.
That's right, so this development was all done before all the regulations that are now set up, where you can't drain all that hard surface and dump it into one culvert and say, okay, good, rinse. Like, this was done back, now you cannot do that, for this exact reason, so, um, so this is an opportunity for us to correct that, we would like to see that the water is somehow diverted into what is engineered to hold it, which is that big red area, it's a water retention pond. It may need to be relined, because water is just not held in there. Uh, on this, on this map, also you'll see at the Garden Side neighborhood, there's, there is, it's also has a water retention pond at the top of the, of the map there on the right. That, whenever that pond gets a lot of rain, it also drains out underneath the road there, and is supposed to go into this water retention area. It also drops into a hole probably, I don't know, I'd say a hundred yards up from the pond perhaps, and where it pops out, is there anybody's guess? I would guess it's on down, you know, somewhere, somewhere in this hillside, on down closer to the farmer's market.
So the pond at Garden Side is not going into that red area collection either?
I've seen it, I mean, it's a live creek, live creek, and then there's a hole probably about as deep as this podium, and it just goes.
Just goes in there?
Goes in the ground. So, you know, you can do a dye test and all that, and it shows where the, the culvert will pop out later on, but we haven't, we haven't investigated that far, but I'm just saying, there definitely needs to be some engineering solutions that make it so your IDA center is not getting flooded anytime you have a real dirty washer. If nothing else, that just really should be addressed. We would also like to see the invasive species removed, the trail system, possibly a bicycle system, um, and make it real, you know, it's a real centerpiece of the town, it could be something for a lot of people to enjoy. There's soccer fields just to the south of it, you know, you have your, um, I can't remember the name of that gym, but the big exercise gym to the north of it, you've got your gymnastics gym. We, as employees, we're seeing people walk all around there all the time, you know, around the flat part of the parking lot, and, uh, we'd love to be able to see this, you know, help make London a more healthy place for people, it seems like it's something that people are already doing, so it'd be pretty cool to have a nature trail right there as well.
So, your, the vision you all have, is, is this a collaborative effort with, uh, the town, you folks, IDA, what groups do you see taking the lead on, I mean, are y'all going to be writing the grants, is my question?
I think we're, we're in charge of writing the grants, is what, what our board is supporting us to, to do this, as long as we can have that conservation piece put into it, so I feel like that's, that's, to me, a no-brainer, nobody wants more, um, you know, bread for pears, or, uh, all, all the, all the invasives that go into all of our cattle fields, like, we don't want to keep breeding that. If, and this, if you go back in Google Maps, this used to be a beautiful hillside when it was first starting, you know, it was, it was a pasture, uh, I'm sorry, I don't know who this land was, but, but it was beautiful pasture, and just from neglect of, of maintenance, it's just turning into what we hate to see, of invasive species.
Is this something we can go ahead and start working on regardless of grant writing?
Uh, yes, so we could, we did talk about, uh, tree removal, um, the town could just go ahead and start doing that tree removal and stump, you know, stump, um, you know, not grinding, I'm sorry, put, like, put the herbicide on the stump, so you're doing stump treatment, so it's not re-sprouting, so it has to be cut and then stump-treated with an herbicide. Um, that, that can happen, you know, any, any time, I think, uh, Jeff got a quote that it should be somewhere between a hundred dollars, two hundred dollars an acre, is that right, Jeff? So, that would be, you know, fairly easy to, to accomplish, I would think.
All right, so were you all marked, I think I mentioned this earlier when we met?
Yes.
When we're talking about cutting down vegetation?
Yes.
I think Drew and I talked, it's probably important to us that we identify what we can cut.
Yes.
Because if you, basically, if you tell us, y'all can go in and cut those trees out, I'm afraid we'll cut everything out that's in our way.
Well, we did have a, um, we had a specialist from the Fish and Wildlife Service, and she pretty much said we could cut it all. She said there was not really, you know, a whole lot that was, I mean, I shouldn't say cut it, she did say that there was a few species that would be worth saving, but unfortunately, it is, I'd say it's ninety percent invasive species there, so. So Brandon, uh, Jeff and I went through, and we did start flagging all the invasives, and we kind of got about two-thirds way through, and then we really realized, okay, we just need to flag what we want to keep. It is, if you, if you take a closer look up there, you'll see little orange flags about this long.
Orange flags being keeping.
No, that was unfortunately. So, so if.
We ran out of ribbon, and there's like two or three different colors, all the colors need bad.
So we might do something white and like really wrap it around a trunk, just to save.
So you want to cut all the trees, even though it's going to be a trail for a white trail?
Native trees would be planted back.
Native trees would be planted.
It's like you do where they do the, I guess, where they log down there.
Well, you know, like the autumn olive, I mean, it's just, it just is a shrub that just will take over any pasture land, I mean, it really, we don't want that seed thing, because every bird that flies through there, and then just carries it on, so, yeah. Removal of invasives is kind of a big drive for us on all of our projects.
Tony, is the IDA, when you met with Ernie, is he willing to kind of tackle the, the engineering services with the town, uh, as far as the water runoff?
I think we.
Is that something that maybe your board, your board can discuss, maybe if it gets Thursday?
Yeah, we can talk about it Thursday, I think Ernie, the, one of, we all know, I think, I think I'm right on this, looking at this total project, the most expensive fix that there's going to be, that culvert, is that safe, still safe to say?
I would say, from what little discussions we have had, uh, the engineer said, I'm not saying it's going to be cheap, but it's definitely fixable, so. I think he was going to get with you guys and give you an estimate of what the, um, what the survey to figure out exactly what the problem is on, he was going to try and do that by today, I don't know.
Yeah, I talked with Matthew, took him along and tracked down, he had to find out the old, uh, old engineering, some plans from them, we, we searched the Mackron motor back there, we couldn't find them anywhere here, so he was wanting to come, I think David was going to try to find us for him. He was going to try to have a proposal for tonight, at least the ballpark of just the, what it might cost to get started, but he's, uh, hopefully you can have it before your IDA.
That's one thing we did, and to answer your question, yes, we're just talking, I want to meet on Thursday night, but I think we moved Mr. County grads and take their steps and move forward here, that's a lot longer.
We're just looking for the town's support for this project at this point, like, not, not a financial commitment, I mean, but just knowing that we would like to create a town park, you know, and we're willing to do a lot of the legwork, legwork, and trying to do some of the organization, we have a grant that is due July fifteenth, I think I'm going to go ahead and just like apply for it, even if we can't do anything else but remove the tree species. Like, we're just going to go ahead and just throw number in there and try it, um, and, uh, hopefully we'll be able to say, hey, we've got this money, maybe you guys can match, or just do what you can do, and, you know, if we get one little trail and remove the trees, that would be fantastic, if we can, uh, make something out there.
And you know, when you look here too, we also extended up behind, that property goes all the way up behind the Whitver's park, as we expand walking trail and or bike trails or whatever.
Yes.
So we've got, I mean, you all have access to that, and I know where you're, one step at a time is to get that, the greenery issue.
Yes.
Is that, taking those trees, is that going to affect the, the green space area, is that a nec, will it have a negative impact, or?
You mean along the trail, is that what you?
No, I'm talking about taking these trees out and leaving the, what happens to the, you know, we, we always get hit with green space that turn, okay, so.
Well, I would say that you would, you would want to follow pretty directly with planting native trees back, you wouldn't want to just leave it, well, maybe in ten years we'll plant it back, because it'll be right back to your invasive species, so, um, but it, it is, it is actually just worse to leave the invasive species.
Do you give us, when you say the town, uh, will you all pick the best trees to go back in there?
Yes, we.
When we get through, when it gets through getting cleaned out?
That Fish and Wildlife Service, uh, specialist, she, she has a whole bunch of documents, I want it to be the best for the wildlife, for trails, you know, for trails for kids to be going through, so, you know, don't want to put things that would be kind of poisonous kind of things, whatever, so, yeah, we'll have a specific list.
Okay, council?
Would this take, I mean, like, I don't know if the green space takes erosion, but if you cut off the trees, wouldn't that make this water problem worse?
So that, that's a good question, um, I would say that it is fairly shallow soils there right now, um, these, the erosion that is happening is definitely specifically coming right out of this stormwater, and everywhere else seems to be fairly, um, stable, it seems like, there's lots of vegetation, grass vegetation is all through it, so, um, I, I would have to have another opinion on that, but I, from what I'm seeing, we can remove the trees and it would be, it wouldn't add to the problem.
Because it's not, you know, it's not, Diane, it's not like you're walking in the woods and cutting down every tree, it is spread out like she almost says, there's plenty of grass cover, so I don't anticipate it being from.
This is not all dirt when we're done in there, right?
Yeah, we're hoping to keep that cover, that grass cover.
And where the water problem is, is mostly where it is, just grass cover, but not many, won't be many trees to remove where the, where the culvert and all that is. So I'll, you know, and one thing too, if you cut a tree, still even the root structure is still there until you get a tree plant back and get them developed.
Well, this has long been a discussion that we've had often over the years, uh, I'm appreciative of the, we got a local agency that's willing to help, and actually willing to take the lead, and apply for the grants, uh, and I'm not hearing the money from the town yet, so, that's a, that's also a very positive thing.
I think the only thing maybe on these grants, we may have to, we do the grant, but it's going to be the town actually applying for it, I believe, since it's your property.
Um, I don't know the answer to that, but.
That makes sense, that makes sense.
That may be the.
Or maybe Ernie, you know what I'm saying, so.
It may be we'll, we'll do all the paperwork for you, but your name may have to go on the town's name.
Okay.
But we'll see.
Can we even make a motion, Mayor, to give assistance where needed?
Yeah, I think, I, I think she, I mean, really, the, they need to move forward, particularly with the grants, said that they have support, but the town will do this, that's what you need.
That's right, and I guess, maybe if, as Kelly's saying, if I need a signatory name, like, can I put your name on it as the grant on fire, I mean?
Or groups, either, I could be happy to, go ahead there, lodge.
I'd like to put that in form of a motion, that we give, uh, them assistance with developing this project, Mayor.
Sir, second?
I'll second.
Mr. Jackson, second, any further discussion?
So we're moving forward Clinch Valley Soil and Water Conservation District, the Hillside Trail Project.
Thank you.
Okay.
And my name's Supereasy, it's just like instead of shove off, it's shove on.
Shove off.
I'm a yay, Diane, or Diane.
Will we vote on that?
I do, I haven't got there yet. Okay, we got a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
O, same side, and again, thank you all, and look forward to working with you, and, uh, I guess we have a meeting, I can't remember when it is, we said. July?
June. We've had a lot of questions about bike trails.
A lot.
And every place that we have, they all know that, and said that would be great if we had to get that ASAP for me.
Yeah, I think it could be pretty cool, that could be a Philly thing, and then maybe we can loop around the soccer fields, that would be like a flatter area for, you know, for younger kids that are just learning how to ride bikes, and then Philly or C for the, you know, more challenging trail, that'd be great.
Okay. Let's see, do, uh, scaring like? Let's see, do, uh, Scary Thing Life and Relay for Life? Okay. You all, unopposed?
Hi, thank you.
You're the second?
Thank you for your time.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to get canned out, but a few little guys, I'll spread on each side. This is a little bit about American Cancer Society, just so that you have a little idea there. Um, I'll just introduce myself first. My name is Skye Benike. I have been named the twenty twenty-four, um, chairperson for the Relay for Life, um, in the Clinch River Valley, and that is Russell County as well as Tassel County. And I'm very excited because next month I will be a six-year survivor. So this is very, very come to heart here.
Yeah.
So, um, my goal is not only just to have a five K, um, color run through the town of Lebanon. Um, my one goal, of course, is fundraising for the American Cancer Society, but it also is to bring our survivors together. Um, COVID just really done damage to that. And, um, they're, they've been struggling for a while, trying to get it back. And I'm trying to sort of think outside of the box. We've not had like a color run in this area or in Tassel County that I'm aware of in the last probably five years. So, yeah, or longer. And so I have on our agenda for July with the State of Franklin Track Club, and they're going to come out and assist with all the times, get us, um, you know, just basically how we get to register. That's going to be linking over to the American Cancer Society website as well. So we would work together with those two communities to be able to get all these people to come in from all these different areas, which is not just good for the American Cancer Society, but it would be awesome for the town as well. So you'll get a lot more people coming into the area that you've not probably seen before. So, um, we're thinking about August twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-four. And also, the event will have vendors, we'll be requesting vendors, food trucks. We'll have, um, just every type of, you know, event that we can possibly get to get more people involved. We will end with a luminary, which a luminary is basically, people can buy bags for their loved ones that can decorate it, put pictures on it, things of that nature. And then at night, we light them all up, and we'll have music with that. Um, so I think it'd be an awesome event, and I hope that you guys would support us on that.
We actually did this several years ago. Can I say you're a survivor?
Awesome.
Uh, we actually did it right here, uh, on the community center parking lot over here. Ball field, there's a big track. Walker trail goes around it. We had the luminary service, people came in, various groups that were supporting it, set up camp, and spent, you know, everybody spent the night, had shifts that they worked. We had, uh, local music, and then we had the piped-in music for the luminary walk. And it was an all, I guess it was during the day and then through the night.
So many hours continually, each group, each team had to have someone walking the track.
Yeah.
Continually for so many hours.
That's where we want to go back to.
Right, that's quite a fight that.
We all loved it, um, but unfortunately, it's just dwindled down. And I really feel like our survivors, not only for fundraising, but you get your, your loved ones together. And there's more support that the American Cancer Society can give that they don't even realize. And also, I have a support group with Grace Wood Church. And it's really sad to say that I can't get people in the door. So I'm hopeful with this, I'll get out and I'll be able to meet people, sort of get that community started again.
I would, uh, I'd recommend too that you meet the superintendent of schools, since you're, you're not doing this, this time next year, basically.
Correct, I'm starting her.
If you can get with her on the agenda, get on their calendar. Now, all the school, we had several schools that had teams.
Awesome.
The elementary, the middle, the high scho, I mean, countywide had teams, churches had teams. And, uh, as Mr. Jackson said, everybody had a certain period of time that, in each team, when they walked, uh, it was, well, almost twenty-four hours.
It was starting like, I don't know what time exactly that you wrote down, like, in the next few. Yes, they took shifts, didn't they? Where each team had someone walking all the time.
Yeah, we'd look, we'd love to see that event back in our community. Yes, and you made a good point, hadn't thought about the COVID issue. I mean, it really did, COVID affected life, as we all know, in period, in ever aspect of life. And, uh, it's, uh, it's kind of touching, it was very emotional, there was a lot of those walks, because, you know, you had a lot of family here, and, uh, it's a good, it's a very good project for twenty-four hours. I think it started on Saturday and finished Sunday morning, just I remember. Is that right?
I thought Cook, the, the town put together and sold and raised money. They said Relay for Life.
Relay for Life.
Relay for Life.
That's awesome.
And the town boys, you probably had.
We had a team wipeout, so we were always number one in everything.
Well, I plan on getting on it.
No, we did it a long time. We loved it. But each of you had a theme?
Yes.
Like a movie theme?
Mm-hmm.
It was fun, it was really fun, too.
Definitely.
Well, I know a year, it says like a long time later, it's probably not for planning purposes. So have you got an idea, uh, when, I mean, do you have a committee yet that's all, y'all are working with to do this already?
Yes.
A planning committee?
Tara is working with me. I have a team of people already on my team, and we'll be working with the State of Franklin Track as well. Hopefully, they will approve next month. And what they do is, they actually come in and they count the runners. It's amazing on the running side, I had hardly thought of it, Tara gave me the insight of that, because these runners are there for, for like, they're competing for a time. And they use that for their other races. So you're not going to just have local people, you're going to have all different types of people. But I'm hopeful that that's going to bring more people in for the event, for fundraising purposes, to get, you know, more people eating out of food trucks and just doing all the different events. But, um, but we definitely have a committee, and we're working hard on getting everything planned.
If it's agreeable, I would like to ask Mr. Jackson's work, um, to work with you all, if you're willing to do that on the planning side.
A little.
A little.
A little, for a long time.
Well, should you give me some suggestions?
Definitely, and we'll text them. This is my first year, so I'm really excited, though.
And this is a five K, correct?
Five K.
And you're looking some, somewhere August the twenty-fourth?
Yes. Yes, we would like to be at the government center if possible, but just because of parking and all that. And then we're looking at running to the opposite end of town, um, because it's flatter. If we come out this direction, it's more hills, so it might deter people from running.
Yes, you'll be working with that man right behind you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Now, where are you thinking about the luminary walk?
Well, I'm thinking that either they come back to the Russell, uh, you know, at the community center there, or, or, or the government center, or at the middle school in that, um, yard would be a really great team, because I need it somewhere dark. Not like, it doesn't have to be extremely dark, but I don't want a lot of lights, so that whenever you see the luminary, it'll light up, and it'll actually shed very well.
Turn the lights off, did it not, over here?
Oh, that'd be great.
That's something we work toward, okay?
Definitely.
Any ques, any council member, any other questions?
So this is actually different, it's like a five K run, it's not like just teams walk in and things.
Oh, that's different.
It's going to be a little different, but I'm hopeful we're going to build back to that. That's where I want it to go.
I'm with you, yeah, so this is not what we did.
No.
Is that what you're telling?
It used to be a lap, it used to be laps, they walked laps.
Oh, and just, that's the only thing that, the only thing that was similar to what we did is the luminary walk. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, but we will set booths set up. We will be, have each team that is, you know, registered, they can set up their own booth. So they can decorate it like with a theme, they can sell whatever they would like for the fundraising purposes. So, for example, one team may do popcorn, one team may just do di- different like homemade goodies, things of that nature.
Okay, alright.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Everybody good? Move forward, alright, just keep in touch?
Alright, yeah, thank you.
Any other? What's her know about? There are new budgets on the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. We have a government carrying, and the heating requirements. We've made the adjustments, so is there a motion to, or any? Let's make a motion to approve the budget, then we'll have discussion.
I'll make that question.
Have a motion to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, a second. Any further, any discussion of questions, the council? I think we addressed several of those issues, and have made, did we make those corrections to everything with the budget from the meetings, previous meetings?
Did you have anything from the meeting I missed?
No.
And change?
A little bit, yeah.
Joe, if you would, just prepare a binder for the council and the mayor as well, for the July meeting, uh, for the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal budget.
Sure, let this. All those, are those in favor of the motion to approve the budget? Say aye.
Aye.
Ho, same side. Okay. Let's see, Mr. Short?
I'll make the motion, I'll say, I'll, I'll.
See you, folks.
Thank you.
Okay, evening, council. Sorry I missed the last meeting. I was able to go back and listen to a little bit of it, uh, about the lending office stuff that Chris Divers and everybody, just did a little lot of research on that. And also for the State Street budget, we've got some stuff lined up for it that we've talked about. First thing on my, uh, manager's report, though, is the Southwest Virginia Water and wastewater fund. Uh, we've got three or four projects that are coming up. Basically, I just wanted to look at the council, which one of those, uh, we wanted to apply for, uh, for those funds for accompaniment. Uh, Debbie says, right now, they still haven't got their state, uh, work from the state budget, it's what's on a B, which is usually around fifty thousand dollars. Uh, we've got three or four projects coming up, such as, I heard, one of the, here and talk about the pump trailer a little bit, it was around that, uh, for the sludge removed from the water plant, take it to the ground, this wastewater plant. We also have a manor water line project we've been preparing for, um, and Stute, and Stute Street, uh, sewer line projects that we need prepared for as well. So those are three projects that are probably going to be coming up this year that we can get to. I was just wondering if the council had, uh, one of those.
We can only pick one of those three, with this.
Well, you can, I mean, we can pick as many as we want, I guess, but usually the.
Do they, do you have any idea if distribution side is, will get funded, will be ranked higher than like if we buy equipment or that sort of thing?
Basically, the way, the way this one is, is basically they just put away fifty thousand dollars for each locality, and they can spin it out how they want to. I'm not, I won't say it's guaranteed, but it's almost, depending on what they get from the state, they usually just put that fifty thousand, basically just a fund, actually get to, you still have to apply for it in some way.
I'm familiar with two updates a little bit, what was the third, so the manor and the vehicle, what's the third?
The Stutes sewer line, Stute Street that runs behind the shop over here. So it actually narrows down, I'm going to guess it's around four inch from a six-inch, um, sewer line. And by far, it stops up more than any other main that we have. Not only hits in the residence backyard, there's also a creek there that deals with EPA issues that we need to.
How big that line being, if we fix it, what are we going to do?
Basically, basically replace the line from the shop, right down in the shop, to the Catholic church. That then, I think, opens back up to a six inch in the back side of the.
Torman Street.
Does that help, like, Mr. Hayes's, uh, Lee Boy Hayes, the company Hayes, will that help their property, Mayor? Or Leonard, you know?
They're right there, up to, uh, they're on this one. Oh, it's something.
They're on this Catholic church.
That's right, they're before, yeah, that's right, they're before you get the car, they're there.
Yeah, and it could go further than that, uh, but I know our biggest issue is, is right there. And one of the things too is, we have, uh, separate companies, and Leach Eight and all that dump into the shop. So anything that they have, it's, you know, it goes through a six inch and they get it, and then we put it into a four inch, it stops up that area, so.
Are those areas higher priority than, uh, down towards Fields Trailer Park? Is that still?
Fields Water Line, yeah, that's still on the P E R side of, if we want to skip it and get away from the P E R and try to do that on ourselves, to Fields Trailer Park is, is one of the highest ones for the, uh, fire protection, is the issue on that.
You think Leach Eight's causing the problem?
Well, it's, I, I thought it was, but then we put a basket over the manhole to catch anything, and still do it. So I don't know if it's the flow, honestly, it's just getting constrict more than anything. It drops down to that floor, plus, there's, there are old brick manholes, it's just an older, older system. And also, when it rains, it's got holes in the manhole, so when that creek floods.
Yeah.
It's down in it and floods it out. Uh, it's usually, um, once a month, Craig Stute's called about his mom's, y'all have been flooded.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I get this, I mean, I wouldn't want, my y'all have been flooded.
We don't want to tell either, no.
So.
Well, I like that one to be one of the top projects.
I'd like just to turn the town manager loose, Tony, on priority, let him, I mean, my only suggestion would be flood the, the application with projects, so that way if something happened, we needed to move one, skip to another in priority.
Oh, yeah.
They would all do.
Take your flooding side.
And, you know, I don't know if that's Debbie and them allow that or not, Drew, but, but I'd work with them to see.
I think they will, like, and honestly, I'm not a hundred percent sure. Last year, you know, I messed up on the, uh, Stute Seagull Line project, so I went to Seager and Langrue did that. The Langrue.
Mr. Bill, like, Bill.
Well, they wrote the whole grant application for it, because they had all the information for it. So I've never hoped this grant, it could just be, hey, we'd like to, we've got some stuff we want to get done, we need fifty thousand dollars.
It might be, yeah.
I know the Ford is using for the P E Rs.
Yeah. Change could help you with that, too.
Yeah. Move forward, I'm agree, everybody agree with that, with, and the same, and the same you, and as far as that level manor project, y'all, do you think?
Right, and I've got, uh, that actually leads into this one, level manor project is not, we thought we were just digging up, uh, some four and two inch line and replacing it with a six inch line. Uh, but the health department required, uh, hydraulic analysis and construction documents and everything going on with that. So Chris Moens in the information, uh, package, has quoted that from the Langrue, and that hydraulic analysis and construction documents, uh, comes to ninety-eight hundred dollars.
Nothing's ever said.
Ninety-eight hundred? Yeah. Which, like I said, could go.
So we have to have that to do the project in the manor, is that what you're telling us?
We want to change anything out, but when we.
Yes. Where's the manor at in, in the big scheme of things as far as, I mean, are we going to get to that this fiscal year? I mean, next fiscal year? Or is there other, like, the projects you just mentioned, like with Fields? I mean, my question is, are we going to do this, but yet will be other places first?
We could, the plan is to still just do it as we have our time, to do a stock up on materials and do it. But we've been ready to go, we've got stuff stocked up and been ready to go for two months now, just waiting to get back from the Langrue fund, the analysis. So we've actually been on a standstill since I left for, uh, Rome.
Oh, analysis.
We're red.
Analysis, say again.
The hydraulic analysis.
Is that what you're asking us tonight for?
Yeah.
If it is the length for us to move forward, we're going to have it.
Yeah, it's in the, it's in the information file.
Also, in the manor project, that was a, that project was supplied and the labor was approved through our company.
Right. Right, and we. We've got, we should have those materials stocked, stocked back, like I said, we've tried to get a little bit at a time, stocked on it. It's just we've been stuck, not allowed to dig, until we got these documents.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we move forward with the land group hydraulic analysis for the manner water project, the amount of ninety-eight hundred dollars.
For a second?
I'll say it.
Further discussion?
Yeah, that's for us, twenty-three, Daniel, one.
Are those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Close, same side.
The, uh, the next item I have, is the James Austin's design, he was a structural engineer, and when Nathan Brown talked about the structural design of our pavilion out here, uh, he dropped by us and plans, the mayor has those, couldn't make a copy, because we can't make copies that big. But he designed it as close to the rendering that Nathan Brown had, uh, for a top to that pavilion. I think the only thing he added is one more support beam on each side, make it four instead of three, uh, per side. But he's priced that, uh, drawing and construction. And, well, what's it say on construction?
You need this? You need this?
No, I need the sheeting models.
Look.
So James has, uh, quoted that for engineering design services, design and, uh, construction drawings for wood structure with a pavilion concrete foundation, I specified by Barryton Hinesgate for five thousand dollars.
Did you say that was in this packet?
It is.
Your report?
Yes, sir, and the information's right after the third.
Oh, we leave the information in there.
Oh, okay, I want to deal with that.
Are these gonna require much change into what they currently have up?
They may have to move one footer where it had, uh, was the time for three in the back instead of four, they may have to move one of those. The really big thing we gotta get in there and make sure they have the work yet.
Yep, I suppose I'm gonna say we need to move on this. Because what we've got up can't last much longer.
No.
Yeah, we need to make it, yeah.
I'll make that motion to proceed.
Section.
Motion to proceed.
Mayor, under discussion, um, I'd like to put the town manager also to move forward, once he did, does receive the construction drawings. Not saying that we have to proceed with the pavilion structure, but I'd like to go ahead and prepare the bid packet and get an idea of what that's gonna cost and get that bid out, so that way we can make a decision if, if that's, you know, if it's something that we can move forward on and on.
And we're gonna need it, Drew, to make an educated decision, but that's, uh, is that part of your motion? Or second, you agree with?
Yes, sir.
Do you? Second. Diane, if we can thoroughly confuse you there?
I think I do.
You're good, okay. Alright, needs a further discussion regarding the motion. All those in favor, say aye? Close, same side.
The last thing I have on my, on my manager's report is, uh, quotes, the heat pump has went down for this room. Luckily, we got a cooling van, it brings the windows up, it's about eighty in here last week. So we got three quotes for a five ton. And this is, that is the last old unit that's out there, uh, the other three have been replaced. And two books of last, they, two thousand seventeen, two of them have been replaced, and I'm not sure, another one maybe two thousand twenty. There's, uh, three quotes in here, Starnes, Stinson, and Collins, uh, heating and cooling.
And they're all, as Tony says, apples gone, apples.
They're, they're all five ton, uh, two of them are fifteen sear, and one is a fourteen sear. Brad can maybe tell you the difference.
Fifteen sear would be just more efficient. And the Collins is, I must make a motion to proceed if Collins total pump for heating and cooling to replace that air conditioning unit.
The, uh, two of them are on the five year parts, one year labor, and, uh, and, uh, see, one is cleaner parts and labor, five year compressor.
They're all the same, other than, the warranty's any about, that's a fourteen sear. Yeah, they're, I mean, that's about as close as apples, apples you can get. Labor, labor warranty's the same, just like Brad said, fourteen sear is the only difference. Uh, that's just how efficient the system runs itself, so the higher the sear, the more efficient that it is.
And, uh, all three of them include a thermostat, that as well.
They have any service and add a dual thermostat?
Do what? This is a digital thermostat too, I think.
Is it remote?
Can we do it from our iPhone, get them down?
Where do we put the thermostat?
This one says it's gonna change existing ductwork.
Is it, is the ductwork issue here, Drew?
Well, it says change out, it says change out using existing ductwork, so the ductwork will stay.
Maybe it's change out the heat pump.
Oh, use it, that's why they have it there.
It includes indoor unit, outdoor unit, the twenty kilowatt heat thermostat, or that's probably electric heats, what that twenty kilowatt is. Uh, thermostat and all job labor work complete. This is, that's on residential, five year warranty on the compressor, one year on the parts.
I'll say, you ready to motion?
Do we have a motion, second? Further discussion? Will he have it done by the July meeting?
Sure hope so. We're concerned about that, we're not concerned with that.
That didn't sound like you were in it there, Drew.
Oh, they're gonna have to order up, I don't know what the time, we're gonna be on the work agenda quick.
I'm just kidding.
Drew should have had that in the quote.
All those in favor of motion, say aye?
Aye.
Close, same side.
It's satisfied, everybody.
Yeah.
You got anything else there, Mr. Short?
I do not, uh, have anything else, other than, uh, Cedar Fest was another, went great, our guys were super learning, everything ready. And it's staying, and it's barely, they're magic, keeping all the plans happening, so another successful Cedar Fest.
It was a great weekend, great weather, we were so fortunate.
How did the trash service work?
Oh, it was really good.
Hey, that was impressive.
Did you ever get out of there before the next one? And if they stayed late?
Oh, it was, I'm impressed, they really did a good job.
He takes great pride in work.
You tell, you tell, it was very clean.
Super, pretty, super respectful.
Yeah, they were respectful, yes.
Constantly on the move.
Oh, they were, yeah.
When is, when is the expected completion date for the rest of the area?
We had a progress meeting, um, two weeks ago, I guess it was, and they expected to be done with all the work by probably the end of this week, and need another two weeks to fine tune everything, they're hoping around first week of July.
Does that mean we could, can we, is it safe to say we can start planning a, an opening in the end of July?
We have a, uh,
A major.
Progress meeting Thursday.
Was it?
Correct, first Thursday, first, Thursday. Yeah. So we'll have, we'll have a progress meeting Thursday, the sixth window, more about. First Thursday every month, right?
Mr. Shane, can you, if you're seeing on those meetings?
Yes.
Okay.
No, I don't have that in there.
Well, you went at the last one.
I know. So you say we're not gonna meet again till the sixth of July? That's what you're saying?
Yes, I said that, uh, so, that's my fault, I'm wrong. Today's the twelfth, we got another meeting, I don't get it, the land group. So July sixth will have a progress meeting.
Can I ask what the original end date was supposed to be? What the completion date was supposed to be?
The original?
The original.
The original.
We don't even.
The latest was May twenty-sixth.
Yeah, that was, I mean, by the time COVID and supply chain hit, there was never a date, formal date set with contractor. It was, it was multi, multi grants that applied toward that.
Well, I was gonna say, I was gonna think it's told up for the last one, the grant getting, uh, the grant, A R C was getting it told up.
Yeah, paperwork, I's, T's, I mean, but I mean, it was, uh.
Oh, it's twenty twenty-two.
COVID, COVID.
See, I didn't know if there was something you could kick back on, and put a little pressure, start charging them by the day for not getting it through.
No, that wasn't part of, no, we can't do that.
We wouldn't use, we're using our money, mate.
Yeah. But, uh, I mean, seriously, I mean, COVID, actually, it, not only.
Oh, they earned everything.
I mean, everything, all the contractors around here, they couldn't get, there was a time they couldn't even get lumber.
Well, a bunch of people found that bucket of money, I didn't find one, that means they didn't have to work no more, I didn't find it.
You miss that one?
I missed that bucket somewhere, I give my bucket, I'm mad.
Alright, anything else for Drew? Alright, thank you, Drew.
Thank you.
Chief Disks. Everybody doing alright? Great.
Yes, sir, uh, thank you, just, I gave you some quick numbers for the, uh, one month of May there. We had a total of seventy-three summonses, warnings, and cases taken in, thirty-one total summonses, nine warnings issued, thirty-three criminal cases taken on, twenty-five of those businesses were closed, eight remain active. We had eighteen total arrests, thirteen misdemeanor, five felony, eight reportable crashes, or eight motor vehicle crashes, fifteen calls for assist motors, and five hundred and twenty-five total calls for service in the month. We were totaled eleven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine miles total through the town. Just a little bit of, of some things to give you, a heads up on Nick, Wayne just completely finished with his academy training now. I was kinda having him here at this meeting to give him a speaker, but he's actually out on training. He, so he left the, he got out of the police academy, and now he is conducting a promotional training through the National Guard. And he'll be gone for a few weeks on that, so we actually won't get him back here to work with us till about September. Um, about the same time that Nissel gets out of the academy, he'll be back for a while, and getting a promotion through the guard, so he's got a training for that. Um, one thing I'd like to let the council know on that, um, he finished top of his class in academics. And on the state test, we got, I just got his results back on the state test this week. And I had never actually heard this before, but there's two hundred and eleven questions on that test, it's a four hour question, and he got two hundred and five.
Wow.
To qualify, or to pass, I guess, you only have to make a seventy-five percent. He was ninety-three percent, so very good on him. Um, Kayla Helbert is halfway through her training, she's not had any, uh, problems with her training at all, she's, she's excelling at the academy and that. We're gonna have her back here for a couple of weeks, so you'll get a chance to hear a little bit, because she was exempt from some of the academy. So you hear her exemption, she's gonna come over and show her F to go with us. So you'll, you'll see her out a little bit, but she's halfway through, uh, she's getting the stuff now that she will excel in, she's in the hands-on stuff that she will be very good at, so we'll have her back around September. Mr. Coulson that we just hired, he started on the fit, and with the ground running, he, of course, he was certified, so he just sees the environment policies, and he can go. He's doing great, uh, I anticipate in two, a few weeks, he'll be fully established and able to do the same.
I got the meeting for the first time this weekend, he's very professional. He appeared very, I was pretty well impressed with him.
He is, he's a great fit for the town, where I see he shared our ideal community place and, and so he's a great fit. And again, appreciate you guys helping us out on that, getting him in here. Other than that, everything's pretty much business as normal, so. Any questions, Drew, you guys?
We have questions for the chief, I'll have him there.
Just let the PD know, we appreciate him taking care of Cedar Fest, and that's just a, it's a big event for us, and a lot of people were complimenting on how many police officers were around different areas.
Different areas, yes, sir. Drew, with that said, or maybe Diane, before I forget, we, uh, make sure, like Marion, uh, Drew, let's get thank yous to everyone that helped us with Cedar Fest, you know, the, the barriers and all of that. And, uh, you might get, I don't know, Diane, a chance, could thank all our employees, you know, that thank you note that we could usually put out, you know, we're, we're talking about, if we could get that, I just don't want it to get by us. I want it, I want it fresh on our mind, to thank, make sure we thank everybody, that's all, try and say. Mr. Taylor?
I don't have anything this time, Mr. Mayor. Are you sure?
Close session? Okay. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session two point two dash three seven one one eight, uh, to discuss part-time personnel. We want to talk about acquisition, pardon?
No.
Yes or no?
Yes.
Acquisition or sale of property and legal counsel.
So move.
For a second?
I'll say it.
Further, any questions? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Close, same side.